All right, we'll begin the meeting.
Yeah.
Any need for executive? Well, we have already two on, correct? I actually have one legal, two personnel, and one contract. They're really quick.
I guess we do that.
Really quick.
I'll make that motion that we go in for those.
Can I ask that during my executive or our executive session that Ann be present?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep. Second, okay. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I do believe we have a need to amend the agenda and add some more things.
I'm really sorry in these words. We need a FEMA GO authorized rep. We need to discuss a door in the town offices. I have a loan schedule that needs signing. And we need to approve some day camp fees adjustments.
Move to accept agenda as amended.
Second it.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we have town meeting minutes from last year. Everyone have a chance to look at those? Memory fresh from a year ago?
Yeah. Looks good.
I didn't see anything glaring, but again, it was a year ago. Then we had meeting minutes from January 18th and 19th.
Mark, you're not going to sign these because you weren't on the board yet for this first line?
Sure.
Are those all okay to send out?
Yep.
Yes.
Oh, there was something, so the old business, this was last meeting when I wasn't here. That's, it wasn't an appeal, it was a motion to alter. Act 250 hasn't gone into the appeal process yet.
We had talked about putting in an appeal, that's why I put appeal.
Oh, well, no, it said Rick Conway's filed an appeal, but he's only filed a motion alter.
Oh, okay.
Just in the minutes. So that part would have to be fixed. Is this town meeting ones?
Yep.
This one I was not, here we go.
Yep.
That's the one you weren't here.
All right, any questions on the orders?
I hate to see $2 million go out here.
I know.
That's my line, Tom.
I know, but I was waiting for you.
It's all my line.
I put it in pink.
Did you? Oh, good. All right.
Yep.
What the heck is that until I looked over and said, oh, out of alley.
Out of alley.
So I guess we put a deposit down on the dock?
Yeah.
It was a second deposit, yep.
Second deposit.
Yep. We did 10% for the first, or, yeah, 10%, we needed to get to 50%, so I think that's the other 40.
All right. That's all I had, was the $2 million in that.
All right, that's that group of them. There's this one, this one, and then payroll.
Three?
Yep. I don't know how else to get them so that they, I don't know, isn't organized. Also, Angie, can you hit admit to let the person in for me, please? On Zoom, you just have to go to that blue button and click on it. The blue admit button at the top of the screen, in the middle, or accept.
The one?
Yep. Thank you.
You want to do it Zoom?
Couldn't you just ask over Zoom, eh?
Oh, I suppose you could.
Yeah, I'm bomb eyed.
So you got to read the agendas, we've got that on the back.
It was a two pager this time.
Tells you that there's three ways to be at the meeting. Two of not, that are not in person. For next time, I will.
Think about that. Again, see, I'm on mute.
That's what we want to hear you.
Hit the floor.
I probably reused it so many times, it's not super sticky anymore.
Be improbable, right?
Yeah, it's a little recycled stick.
That's okay, that's a good thing.
All right, Assistant to the Town Manager Report?
Mike from Rutland County Solid Waste, and I didn't touch his last name when he called me, called. He let me know that I had misquoted how much a permit was on Gleason Road. It's $15 residential and $30 for business, not whatever I said at the last meeting. But he said that the way we're doing permits, he can't reciprocate for our town at the Gleason Road Transfer Station because we include a punch pass with our permit. If we had the permit separate, he can do reciprocating, so if they had a Town of Pittsburgh Transfer Station sticker, they would not have to have a Gleason Road Rutland County Solid Waste one. So he's saying that he would recommend us changing so that we have one fee for the permit, not have the punch pass included in that price, and then another one. And he said that he did a lot of research in the last year for what the towns are charging for their permits. He said the average is about $40 for just the pass alone for each transfer station, for these smaller towns that have transfer stations. So he wanted to bring that to our attention.
So what's the whole deal with Gleason? How are we affiliated with that?
Because we're part of Rutland County Solid Waste District.
Right.
So if, if we sell just the sticker that goes in the winner, window, the pass, if we had just that separate, people wouldn't have to pay for the Gleason Road Pass sticker for the year. They would accept Pittsburgh's, but because we're including a punch pass with ours, they can't reciprocate.
So they would be, so if they got a Pittsburgh sticker without a punch pass, but they have to buy a punch pass at Gleason?
No, Gleason goes by weight, the Gleason Road Transfer Station.
Oh, okay.
But you're supposed to have, you have to buy a pass in order to use the Gleason Road Transfer Station.
All right, okay, I, yeah.
So it would be reciprocating, except we include one punch pass with our sticker. He said we need to separate them in order to be able to reciprocate.
Though also, you still can bring your stuff to Gleason without a pass? And they just, it's like a per ton, when they weigh, the per ton is a little higher.
Yeah. But he just wanted us aware of that.
Yeah.
So I'm just letting you guys know of the conversation.
Well, I know especially because we're going to be looking at the transfer station ordinance, we'd have to think about whether we want to make any changes or not.
Yep. And then, I'm not reading all of my report, it was long. I did submit the first requisition for payment for a Pittsburgh Village Farms grant, working with Patrick, Isaac, and Gary to make sure we did everything we had to do on our end. And then we still show 80 accounts, 80 accounts as delinquent in taxes, which, that was on Monday. We're already down to 76, we're pounding away at them.
All right.
And I've been making repayment agreements with some. Some are ignoring me still, and some I have been able to get into the V-HAP tunnel to try to get them funding that way. So we've actually seen a lot of success with that program.
That's good, is there, there must be a deadline for that?
I want to say it's September of this year, I'm not 100% September or funding runs out.
Yeah, okay.
But we've had very good luck, so I would encourage people, if they're struggling, to definitely reach out. It is a one-time thing, but they've taken care of a lot of multiple-year delinquent tax properties. And helped relieve the tax burden. So it's been a good program. And then the other two things I wanted to bring to your attention and ask if I could participate in is USDOT on February 8th is doing a webinar on preparing, preparing for upcoming discretionary grant opportunities. I'd like to attend it to see what upcoming grants we might be able to get for DOT. It's from just 3:00 to 4:00 PM and it's free.
I signed up for that, too.
Did you? Okay. And then I found through Vermont Bond Bank, they're doing a Vermont Capital Planning Forum. It's Thursday, April 13th, it is in Berry, but it's a free, I just have to get myself there and back. And they're doing Capital Planning 101, How to Make It Happen, Vermont Capital Planning Awards, Capital Planning for Climate Change Adaptation, and there is a thing about local option tax, like informational, too, but I'd kind of like to go to that to learn more about the capital planning process because I think it's something that we could definitely use here.
For sure.
Absolutely.
Short, sweet, to the point, that's.
Perfect.
Whatever.
Thank you. All right, any Select Board Member remarks? I don't really have much, except that I did go, VLCT started doing a legal lunch hour, I did that. And then they do their twice-a-month advocacy chat, and then I went to the Legislative Breakfast this more, or earlier this week, and then the TAC meeting. So we got a lot of grant info, lots of pages of notes I won't bore you with now, but figured I'd share those with our new town manager. There's a lot, a lot of new grants that are coming through, so. That's all I have. Any public comment? Yes?
Is this for new business stuff or public comment? I called in.
Nope, you're on the agenda.
Ah, I didn't see you.
Right over there.
Am I on the agenda?
You tell me.
Yes, you're on the agenda.
You're both on.
Because you're here for the library, right?
Got you on there. All right, let's probably put stuff up. All right, um, let's see. Well then, yeah, let's, let's just get to.
Felicia?
Yes.
Our last meeting, the snowmobile party was, we're asking for some of your help, Mike. I can't help but notice, see, they cross the Cornhill Road right between me and Fox's.
Yep.
And then they cross the Stevens Road down there. Would it be a good idea for the snowmobile people to put up some signs there? I know Ed Fox don't want them to steal in the summertime, but if they had some signs there with a couple cement blocks on them on each side to warn people that it was, and cars, that there's a snowmobile crossing. Seems like that would make sense.
Yeah.
That's something they could do.
We filled out the application last week, I haven't heard anything back from them.
But, and there's, those are just two crossings right in my neighborhood.
Well, one of the worst ones is off of Route 7.
That's got to be, but that Cornhill one.
No, I, I see it when I'm out.
They go back and forth across there a lot when they're showing. And there's no markings for cars to even know that it's there.
They should maybe put up a permanent sign, I mean, it can be up all year round.
Well, I don't know, Ed Fox wants posting signs.
Would have to do, do with, have to talk to the landlord or see what he's willing to accept.
Right. But if they just had some portable signs there for, for in the winter.
The portable signs, Joe, they'll, they'll get stolen or torn down and blown over with snow. Yeah, well, yeah. I would say for best to talk to Mr. Fox about what he would accept and allow him to do, but I think it, it should be marked there.
Yeah.
Yep.
And it's within, Ed can't see it from his house, but I can.
Oh, I'm sure you can.
I don't think Town Highway could do that in the right way.
It just seems like some signs for the cars to see.
Close, close as on.
Like a yellow sign with a snow machine on it.
Yep.
Yes, I understand that.
And it wouldn't be any problem.
That's Kelly at the bottom.
Your fault.
Kelly at the bottom.
Yeah.
Just a thought that came to my mind.
Let me, let me see, when they, when they recontact me, we can, we'll talk about that.
Do you want me to send an email to Mike Stewart? Because I don't mind doing that, I have his email.
But don't they have him up here on Plains Road? Snowmobile crossing?
I see him some, I've seen him somewhere, I can't tell you exactly where I've seen him, but.
And I don't know why they couldn't put the signs up in the town right away. You know, permanent sign that they put down. Don't really have to have permission, I don't believe, to, but it'd be nice to do that.
No, I do, too, I mean, he takes a lot of pride in his field.
Oh, yeah. And maybe say, can we do it?
Yeah, can we do it?
I'm sure we could do it in the right way.
I'm sure he'd be okay with it, but.
I'll check with Mike Stewart.
All right, great, thanks.
Yep.
There, there could be a sign clear up on, on mine, right across from my house, from my mailboxes, because that's not far from there.
No, warning them that.
And they could put a sign, well, where Fox's and my property line kind of come together is a telephone pole there, and they could put a permanent sign there. Can't be more than 100 yards from there to where they cross. And that sign could stay there year-round, wouldn't bother anybody.
I'm in agreement with you, Joe.
All right, let's put in new business. Rutland County Humane Society.
Beth?
Beth is on.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Good.
So for those of you who don't know me, I'm Beth Saradarian, Executive Director of Rutland County Humane Society, and a Pittsburgh resident. And we have had the last couple years, a coin drop on Route 7 in, right in front of the Lowthrup School that has done very well for us. And I was just wondering if we could have another one this year. We were looking at Saturday, October 7th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Yep, I make the motion.
Second.
Will you allow this with the stipulations, you get permission from the state of Vermont to have it on Route 7?
Yep.
Yep.
Any second?
I did.
All right, all favors say aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, McClure Library Coin Drop, Judy.
I thought that was a dead deal.
What?
She just asked for it now, anyway.
No, you have to ask for it.
Yeah, no.
You have to ask for it.
No, I, I thought she asked for it before.
Oh, no. She's just on, on the, she's been on the agenda for a while.
She's been on the agenda since the last meeting.
Oh, all right. Looking for a coin drop on July the 1st.
Oh, July 1st?
July 1st.
I had June 1st, okay. Same time, 10 to 2?
Yep.
Make a motion.
Same place?
Okay. Motion has been made?
Second.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. I hate to beg and run, but I'm starving.
Aye.
Sir, you are up. All right, yes?
So my name's Tim Johnson, and I'm the owner of MT Johnson Incorporated, a logging company. We've been working in the area for quite a few years. I want to address bringing up, I, pretty positive eventually you'll have to take it up with the state, but it's a traffic safety issue on Route 7. I've been involved now in two accidents this summer, and it's not been my fault, and it's not pleasurable. But at the junction of Route 3 and Route 7 South, where the double lane on the southbound side is, and it continues south up the hill, and it flattens out and then goes back to a single lane, I'm recommending that you guys, for a safety issue, and I'll explain this, that you put the left-hand lane into a turn lane only from the junction of 3. I understand why that was done. It was for trucks turning out of the junction of Route 3 so that there was a slow lane and you could keep through traffic going through. But if you would put your town cop there and give you an assessment, or even one of those speed signs that calculates the speed as it does, and it'll print out a report to you, they give those out for grants, too, you can get that. And you can put it there and you can have a report, and you will see every single person, even the locals, we'll all get caught once in a while, but the locals. You accelerate as soon as you cross the bridge on the southbound lane, you enter the gas station, and you hit that thing, and it is like Daytona 500. For trucks hazard, and also every resident that's packed on that left, left-hand side, on the northbound side, in order to turn into there, or a person with a small pickup in a landscape trailer, they have to come in and out of there, and you cross and you use more than one lane. It's a, it's a blind hill if you're going south. As you go about 150 yards from the intersection of Junction of 3, southbound toward Rutland, it is a blind hill in turns. And anyone coming out of those upper driveways, and myself, Markowski's have a commercial lot there, as you know. Other people come in and out of that commercial lot for other stuff. We've been coming out of there with our trucks. And you have to exit the sign. We use our strobe lights, we use our flashers, and we come out of there, and it does not matter, the people do not care. And when you drive over the road enough, you're going to see there's a lot of people who don't respect trucks, period, in driving. Not to say that trucks don't have their own problems also. But somebody is going to get killed there. My last accident I had there was a local contractor that ran into me once again on the left-hand side. Both accidents happened the same. When you come up there with a truck and you're going to make that tight turn, or you're coming out of it, doesn't matter which way, you have to cross a lane. Once you make your position known, when you approach your turn and it's safe, doesn't matter which way you're coming, the traffic from that southbound side coming up there accelerates so much from that junction, and they come up around that blind corner, by the time they get there, and it's so congested, it's a choke point, and they're going too fast. So to avoid this, this is what has happened both times, they have crossed into the northbound lane, which causes another hazard right off and oncoming traffic, and somebody is going to get hit head-on there. Now, I have personally witnessed this twice, and the last one made me extremely ticked off that I needed to come here and this needs to be done. So my recommendation is that you talk with V-Trans, and you talk about making that when they do the repainting stuff there. It should be on town's position for safety, period. From that junction all the way up should be only one lane. Until it flattens out, and when you get to the point of the guardrails where the last house is, it can return into the, whatever flow traffic you want and the speed. Everyone's speed, or, not everyone. Majority of the people speed up that hill, and if you just stand there, take five minutes, stop at the gas station, grab a coffee, you will hear nothing but engines accelerating from that junction up through. And of all the pla, I'm a supporter of police 100%. Of all the places that I've seen your officers sit, I would recommend that also be another one for the sake of slowing them down. It is crazy there. And I cannot stress enough, after the last accident I got into, that somebody is going to get killed. Whether it sends somebody into one of those local houses that are right there, or it hits an oncoming car, it's not going to be good. I had talked to the Markowskys, let them know that I was coming in to mention this, they were in favor of it. I talked to a couple of the fire department members, I heard you said you were earlier there or not, I'm not sure if I met you on the last incident or not.
Got the bumper.
Oh, well, it got more than the bumper.
I was there, yeah.
A lot of damage. So I have met, I have talked to a few around, and I did talk to one of the officers that was on scene that night, and they all have said the same thing to me. This has been a problem since this lane has been extended into the two lanes, and it is definitely a hazard in all of their opinion. Again, my recommendation is, you guys should be on board with this. It is a town safety issue here, somebody's going to get hurt. And I think if you go on that that's your plan, and you put it to V-Trans to propose, I know they got to do the traffic study stuff and all that, but being that that Route 7 project was probably relatively soon, or recent, and they did the traffic study on that, I would think the information should ought to be come there, and this should be able to be returned back to a single lane there, and at least have that southbound lane be a turn lane only, until the top of the hill where it's safe. Last thing I would like to say, for them to stop, nobody wants a ticket coming home or going to work every night, or in the morning, I get it. But so it alleviates a little bit of the local cops having to give everybody in the neighborhood tickets, some deservingly so. I recommend that you also, from the, both the north and southbound sides on the breakdown lanes, from the white line, what would you say, the white line to the ditch line, I would recommend that you paint hash marks, and this is a common thing that a lot of towns are doing to get a slowing and a calming sense for traffic coming from a 50 mile an hour zone into a village zone, and especially if there's any other obstacles like the downslope, or the turn, or intersection and a gas station there, houses turning in and out of there. So it's hash marks that they paint there. It doesn't obstruct the road, doesn't do anything about it, it's just a study. And I have some background at this, I was a Select Board Member for 21 years in Barnard. So I'm understanding of all these issues, and this is a calming sense that it will naturally slow people down, and it feels like they're funneling and stuff. So they will automatically start slowing down, and I think that hash marking would help a lot there. So those are the two things I recommend. I hope you consider it highly, because I certainly, I'm going to be working in the area. I occasionally go there again. I certainly, I'm not necessarily worried about myself in a bigger truck getting it, but it's when the other cars make contact, they deflect, and it was, it was close, this last one. So that's all I have to say. If you have any questions, you can let me know.
The state's wisdom, they want to put another lane in the bridge going south. So now we're going to have two lanes going south.
Just to speed it up more.
I think we elect those officials, so I think we should probably say something back to.
Well, we've been saying stuff about that.
Trust me. We're in a big discussion about that right now, good points. Chief, any comments?
I have nothing, my guy was up there tonight.
Yep.
Stefan was sitting up there tonight. We'd get quite a few tickets in there.
Oh, wouldn't they?
Police chief?
I am.
Oh, Tim Johnson.
Hi, Tim, Mike Orville.
So. Bill? Is that, I mean, it's been a passing lane there forever, but what? Is this, I mean, I know we've had accidents there in the past, but is it worse now that they've redone it? Just because it's so much more open? People just, much worse, okay?
That's all the state's doing.
He's not kidding when he says, if you're at the store.
Oh, no, if you're there getting.
I'm getting gas, and they're coming by me and they're just hammering on it.
Oh, yeah, no, I know, yeah.
He's not lying there, it's true.
You guys wanted to get a revenue gap in the budget, right?
Probably not a bad idea.
But it's, it's, I just really can't stress upon the opinion of the, the flow of that traffic onto there and stuff, and the calming sense of it is to get them to slow down. Also possibly, it's a dramatic change in the speed limit from there, from the 50 zone. There's no slowing zone, a 40 mile an hour zone or whatever, and that might be something to help from the northbound coming down into the village.
Well, it does, it does go to 35.
Up on top.
Up on top of the forest.
Actually, we're installing one of those flashing signs with Evan Brandon.
Yeah.
That's coming in the spring, I hope. I mean.
Supposed to be.
Supposed to be.
I know, we'll see.
No word?
I've heard nothing.
We're working on that right now for a flasher to slow down.
We put some in Barnard, and those are a very good thing for the locals.
Yep.
Makes it so that you remember it's there also, and you don't constantly go down the road and you were five minutes later, get the kids to school, and you got a ticket for it. It, just that quick blue light, that right there is absolutely good leasing, in my opinion, right there. And, and those are, they, again, they put, they do grants for these all the time, those different signs and that traffic study stuff. What you want to do, I recommend getting one of the ones also, that it tracks the speed as people got, if you're having a problem area, it'll print out a report, and it'll tell you how fast the majority, it'll tell you percentages, it'll tell you what they come right down. I mean, you don't need one of those guys there to tell you the, what it's going to be, that'll do it.
Good points.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
No, thank you.
He just got one before he came here.
Oh, yeah.
I'll tell you, some of the speeds I've had, I've had like 65, 63. So the signs that he has chit and then got them, and it slows a lot of the locals down. People from out in Topnot so much.
Yeah.
But it is, it is something that makes them think and slow down. And then for my end of things, what's nice is, there's no way they didn't see it.
Right, right.
So then I was like, you know, there's a flashing red sign there?
Get the one with the little blue light that flashes, too, that even.
You can't do that, it'll stay out of the way.
I know, I know you can't.
They'll come in and find you.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Well, how do they get away with it on Route 4 in Woodstock?
Yeah, but they do. Yeah, but they do.
I have no idea, but we got.
If you're coming into Woodstock, there's.
Oh, boy.
Blue one there.
We got told we were going to find it.
Maybe it's if we take over Route 7.
The state actually does not plow that section of road.
But that would, that's.
Where those signs are, they, they take care of all the plowing in the Route 4 section of.
They do. That's why.
The town, the state truck on the, what do we want to call it? On the west side of town, that, that side, that's where they stop plowing as they enter the village. And on the east side, that's where they stop plowing.
Where the bridges.
Right where like Billings Farm Museum too, where in that area, they stop right there. Everything is plowed by the town inside. And that's something that's been done from way, way back. Those are the only things. But yeah, and that's another thing you could bring up to the legislators. You can't put it on the state. Now, why are they against safety? I would bring up, that's my question.
They call distracted.
Yeah, it's distraction.
I would let them bark at that and fight that fight with the public, not you guys. You guys, I would throw it right at them and that's, you're, you're here to have a safe town, you know? Nobody, that was a bad night. Christmas Eve, it could have been a lot worse. So if you guys have any questions, otherwise I'm going to head over the mountain.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. I appreciate it. Good to meet you guys.
Have a good day.
Thanks for coming in.
All right, Barrett, Village Farm Grant. So this.
Well, before that, I got an idea.
Okay.
Let's set up a 24-hour coin drop at the junction of Route 3 and Route 7.
Somebody get ahead.
Well, that's a good way to collect money though. Okay. Yeah, Mike, real quickly, I would like a letter of support. We're going to go after another grant. This is the Community Recovery and Revitalization Grant, which I'm sure you've heard of because it's been pretty well publicized. Again, it's a post-COVID. So that's all we need. It's just a letter of support.
No, no more work for the town, just a letter of support?
Yeah, but do you have to get some money for the grant thing?
We're still.
Pass us some money.
For the planning grant.
We got the grant, the planning grant back in July. We're still not, we're still not there. And I remember Joe, you got to redefine print. Well, there's always fine print that comes over and it's easy to overlook it.
So Barrett, what is this one going to be used for?
Well, it's, it's more the same. I mean, it's, it's, there is money available sort of on the, on the COVID side.
Yep.
And this is revitalization of, of local economy.
Okay.
So our budget has gone from 1.3 to 2.6 from when we started. So, you know, we keep getting ahead, but we need more money to get this thing operational.
So I just want to clarify, we've done this before and it's turned out different. I have no problem with a letter of support, but there is no other involvement of the town other than like Alicia or someone writing this letter. That's it.
That's it.
Okay.
It's just that somebody up in Montpelier, I'm not even sure anybody reads the letter, to be quite honest. It's a matter of checking off a box. The applicant is.
Well, the town supports what you're doing.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. So, yeah, I don't mind writing it if everybody else is okay with that. Okay.
Motion to have Alicia write the letter of support for the Village Farm.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I'm working tomorrow. I'll try to get it on Friday, Barrett. Take care. Do we have someone from Otter Creek Engineering?
You might want to do Brad first.
Oh.
I don't know. He's on.
I don't know what Brad's on for.
We're making wait.
Yeah. Well, this should, I'm sorry, what was that?
I said, I don't know what Brad's on for, so.
Um, he's got a mowing contract.
Oh.
Yeah, actually, well, let's, do you, is the Otter Creek presentation going to be lengthy?
Uh, I, I hope not, but it may be based on some of the questions that I get. So if you would like the mowing to go in front of that, that's okay, buddy.
All right. Yeah, thanks. Let's take, let's do that. Brad?
Is he on there?
It says he is.
I know. Brad, are you there?
Brad Keith.
He's muted. He needs to unmute.
You got unmute.
Is he calling?
Hit the unmute button. Is he the only one that put in a bid?
We haven't put, we haven't put out bids yet. This was, this was an old one.
Oh, this is.
This is the one, old one.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
No, it was the old one. We, we haven't put it out for a bid yet. We were going to discuss putting it out to bid or doing it in-house.
Okay.
I'm going to tell him, I'm getting myself a text right now.
I'm calling. She hasn't answered though, so keep going.
All right.
Maybe you wanted to explain something.
Why don't we do Otter Creek Engineering?
Yeah, I know. Okay.
All right, text it up.
All right, we'll go ahead to the Otter Creek.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. My name is Craig Jewitt with Otter Creek Engineering and we've got a couple of different items to hit on. So I will try and breathe as brief as I can. Please feel free to interrupt me if there's any questions as we go along through this. But so the last time we talked about the Segment 2 water and sewer improvements, the board had authorized Otter Creek to proceed to 60% final design in order to get the plans to a point where they could go through V-Trans' right-of-way process for Segment 2. About a month ago, we received review comments on those plans, fairly minor, I would say less than four or five comments total on the plans. And we are coming back to the board to recommend proceeding forward with completing 90% design plans. The only reason we're not recommending 100% design plans is we all acknowledge that at some point in time, V-Trans is going to come back and look at the drawings again and there's going to be some amount of finalizing that needs to be done based on what ends up with their project and how that may or may not affect the town's project. There is a current planning loan that is still active related to financing the final design cost. So it is just a simple reimbursement process at this point. There's no out-of-pocket expense to the town. If the project does not proceed to construction within five years of completion of final design, repayment would start on that planning loan, but it's a 0% interest loan with a 20-year term related to the loan. Hopefully, V-Trans will have proceeded forward and are ready to, to move on that project. And if that's the case, then the costs associated with final design would roll into whatever construction loan was used to help finance the town's portion of the project costs. So I guess with that, what we're recommending to the board is to authorize us to proceed forward with 90% design development and approval through the, through, through the people who are financing the planning loan.
But this, you're saying this has got to be the actual, the actual planning or the actual fixing of the road has got to be done within five years?
No. So, so the way that, the way that the town is financing the design, paying for the actual design development is through a planning loan. And the planning loan, if it is not, if it does not result in a construction project within five years of completion, then you have to start paying back that loan, which is a 0% interest loan with a 20-year term. If the project proceeds to construction, that associated cost can get rolled into whatever construction loan is to physically pay for the improvements once those are done at some point in time down the road. Hopefully sooner rather than later, but I know this project's been talked about for many, many years. So I'm under no illusions that we may be talking about this several more times before we're any closer to construction.
Yeah, I just, I guess, I, I get that part now. I understand it. That's not the big deal. The big deal is what happened to us on 7 South where we had to go back in and move our water lines. Everything was designed and then all of a sudden, oh, the state changes their mind.
Feds changed the.
Or Fed, whoever changed where we're, so.
Yep. And, and that's exactly why the board decided last time not to have us go further with design Segment 2 to make sure we weren't getting ahead of ourselves or the town wasn't getting ahead and repeat what happened related to Segment 1. So no, there's no proposed construction associated with this. This is a proposal to finish the design or get the design to a 90% stage so that the funding agency can approve it from their standpoint and then it can be waiting for when ultimately V-Trans says we're, we're going to move forward with the construction on this project.
All right. Just my opinion, until the state of Vermont has a plan for where that road's going to be, I'm a little hesitant for us to plan where our sewer and water lines are going to be. That's just my opinion.
Well, I, I would say on a couple of different notes. So the V-Trans project, their, their Segment 2 road project is at a similar 60 to 75% phase as far as the development of the design and what they plan on doing. I would say that in Segment 2 in particular, you're in the downtown village. There is not much room for that road to move one way or another as opposed to Segment 2 or Segment 3 on the other side of town as you go up to Brandon. Obviously, there's a little bit more room to, to move that road around, a little less so through Segment 2. So I would say you're concerned of not wanting to get too far ahead of anything is completely understandable. I don't know if there's that much variability with where the road and the associated stormwater that they need to do can go within their existing right-of-way. We, we've, we've designed the project to be on edge of V-Trans' right-of-way through the village corridor. So it's as far, far off of V-Trans' right-of-way as possible and as close to being outside of their right-of-way while still being in their right-of-way. So I will say the chances of there being vast changes that would directly impact the, the village's sewer and water design are very limited in this, in this situation, in my opinion.
I agree with that. The only one we'd quite mind would be the one north.
Should the state present us with a plan for us to consider before we, seems like we're, are we trying to override the state, are we? I would hope not. Maybe I've got that wrong in my mind.
No, we're, we're not trying to override the state. What we're trying to do is ride the fence with keeping the town's best interests tented out while still satisfying what the town needs to do to partner with V-Trans on this project. So it's, it's definitely a fine balance related to that and not being too far ahead or behind the process. I think you guys will recall not too long ago, Segment 3 became a, a big deal to the point where V-Trans said, hey, you guys got to move on Segment 3. We hadn't talked about Segment 3 for, since I've, I've been involved with working for the town, me personally, hadn't been a conversation at any point in time through the Segment 1 or the Segment 2 conversations. And then all of a sudden, it began, it began to be an issue and it looks like Segment 3 is actually going to get done before Segment 2. So, you know, planning, planning anything alongside V-Trans is, is difficult and V-Trans doesn't play nice with others. And, and that is kind of the crux, the rock and hard place you're, you're in from kind of what you guys are trying.
I, I personally think Segment, the one in the village, that should go forward. My own feelings on that because that's, there is no room to do anything else. You got to do.
Very, very limited. I would say that.
Yeah. Because right now all our stuff is, I think, in the middle of the road.
It is.
Most of it's in the middle of the road, as far as I know.
That's, that's correct. And the design as of right now has the sewer on one side of the right-of-way and the water on the other side of the right-of-way. So we're as far away from the traveled portion of the road as possible, which has been V-Trans' overarching requirement to say if you leave anything in the road, you may not like what we make you do to replace anything in our road once we've done this project.
And as we push this down the road, we're going to want to be in the right position.
Yeah, we are. So.
Oh, we are. We are.
I think we should go with that. Go ahead with that design.
So it's from the, the bridge to the south, how far north?
To Plains Road.
Plains Road.
To Plains Road.
To Plains Road. Okay.
And then Segment 3 is Plains Road to.
Plinewood.
Plinewood.
Yeah, thanks. Yep.
That one's no big deal, I don't think. Cause there's not much to move up to there.
No, that one's going to be the easiest one.
That's the easiest one to do.
It is. But, yeah, but depending on where they put ditches and whatever. I mean, that's.
Well, that, yeah, that would come into play like.
Like down there. That, yeah, that's more, yeah, I didn't know if this went from Plains all the way through.
Maybe not so much on that one, but let's get the, the village.
The village.
At least the village priority on village.
So this is a, it's no interest loan, five years before we have to start repaying anything.
So the, the five-year term starts when you stop utilizing the loan. So one of the conversations that we had when Mr. Haverstock was still town manager was requesting a 10-year period instead of a five-year period because the town, normally the town is in control and can bond for these types of projects whenever they see fit. And that's why the five-year term is there. So it's not just a, you know, a loan for the sake of the loan and then the town just drags it out forever. Mr. Haverstock and Otter Creek made a request to have a 10-year term or to extend that term, which they have done in the past with other projects due to the fact that the town isn't in control of kind of the schedule of this project. The people who were at WID at the time decided that they couldn't do that. And all of those people have left now. And my determination that I've gotten from the people at WID now is so long as the loan hasn't closed out and we haven't finished design, it's five years from when you finish the design and get 100% design approval.
And this is going.
Oh, that makes a lot more sense.
That makes a lot more sense.
That clears it up.
Still be passing a straight face.
Then go ahead and do it all.
Okay.
Uh, depending on when it starts.
And this will take it to 90%, right?
Right.
Correct.
Yeah. No, okay. Now, yeah, now it makes sense.
That makes a big difference.
Yep.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
We go ahead of that. We need a motion.
A motion?
That's Segment 2.
Okay. Hold on, hold on a second. They're going to do a motion and let's do it in sections so we don't get overwhelmed.
All right. I'll make the motion that we proceed with this planning for Segment 2 to the 90% level.
I'll second it.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. So the next topic is related to lead service inventory work. So some of you may or may not have heard about the new lead service inventories that are required for every water system, every public water system in the state of Vermont. And this is as a direct result of the situation in Flint, Michigan. EPA has made a blanket mandate across the country for every public water system in the country to have a lead service inventory developed by October 2024. So that essentially is going into your existing records, going into everybody's basements and determining what you do and don't have for information related to your service line material. This includes service line material that the town does not have physical ownership of or control of. So it's essentially from the water main to the meter.
Wow.
That is, that is the mandate by EPA. They do not care whether the town owns or controls all, some or none of that line. They are ultimately responsible for identifying the material of that service line.
Who's paying for that?
The WID, WID has come up with a funding bucket related to this. And this year they put $20 million into it related to getting the inventories done for the top 74 water systems in the state. Some of those will be straight loans based on median household income. Others will be partially or fully subsidized loans. And they have not been able to determine definitively what everyone's subsidy will get. So what Pittsburgh subsidy would be versus the city of Robbins. And that's mainly because EPA has said, we're going to give you a bucket of money. You are required to give 50% of that away as grant, whatever that amount is. So it's a sliding scale. If they only take, if they only give out X, half of that has to be a loan. So they can't really say, hey, this is how much subsidy you're going to get. They originally kind of indicated how much subsidy each, each water system would be eligible for, but they've subsequently kind of backtracked. be eligible for, uh, but they've subsequently kind of backtracked from that a little bit. So what you guys have in front of you is a draft of an engineering services agreement and a associated lead service inventory, inventory loan application. The loan is a zero percent interest loan with a twenty-year, uh, repayment schedule associated with it, um, similarly to the planning loans. Um, so I, I will say from a subsidy standpoint, I can't answer the question of how much subsidy the town will get. I am comfortable that the town will get subsidy related to this, but to the amount or to the extent, I can't say. So I wouldn't recommend that any decisions be made related to subsidy. I would look at it from the standpoint of saying, this is required by EPA. Um, it's not budgeted in any of your current budgets. It wasn't allocated for or identified as far as a, a future cost, uh, that needed to be considered. So this planning loan money is the cheapest money available to the town to get this done. Um, you're not required to take the money. You can go somewhere else and get money from, uh, you know, a, a bank or the municipal bond bank, but it's certainly not going to have a zero percent interest loan associated. So, um, what we've done is we've put a contract together that outlines, uh, hourly services that we think are necessary to complete the inventory and the requirements that the state is requiring of the town. And the services would be invoiced on an hourly basis based on time spent. So hopefully if we're efficient and we can do this effectively, obviously we have a lot of information on the town's water system in general. Hopefully that will streamline and save, save this and save us some time. And I did have a specific conversation with Sean about whether they felt they had any time, manpower or ability to help out with this. And while Sean is more than willing to help out wherever he can, um, he certainly acknowledged that this would be quite the undertaking, uh, for them to try to handle on their own. So he was kind of, he was in support of having us do it, um, because he was fearful that if he was left to do this himself, um, that he would not have the manpower or the ability to do so with, with the other things that he has to get done. Um, so I know I, I just threw a lot at you. Um, the engineering service agreement is not signed. It's, it's the basis of the loan amount and you provide that as that basis. You do not have to execute the contract until after you're given a determination related to the loan. Um, normally that would come with some amount of subsidy attached to that, but like I said, I would not anticipate that that's a definitive number until we figure out how much money they're giving out to everybody.
Those are all separate ones that we have to do.
So this is strictly municipal water, correct? It's not everybody's water in town.
It's everyone who's hooked up to our service.
It is the, it's only the connections to the water system. So there's six hundred and twenty-one connections, I believe, total to the town, uh, to the town's water system. We would have to go physically inspect six, and, and potentially six hundred and twenty-one connections. We might be able to eliminate some based on information that we have, um, either in the water system records or records that we have from projects that we've done, um, related to that. So it's just the connections to the water system. It does include non potable connections. So it does include five simple, uh, fire connections to the system. So it's any connection to the water system, not just, uh, potable water services necessarily.
So the process of figuring this out, are you talking, I mean, cause you could go into somebody's house and see the pipes fine, yet just outside their foundation is a section of old lead pipe. Are you gonna have to dig up people's water lines to find this? How are you gonna do this?
So how this works in the initial stage is that there's no digging, no sampling, nothing related to trying to identify if we have a question about whether something might be lead containing or not. What this initial phase is, is what does the town have available for information? What do they feel comfortable that they can definitively put in the non-lead category? And then everything else that either is lead or you, you aren't sure is considered lead until you prove otherwise. And that's what phase two would be is taking that list and trying to pare down that list as best you can to say, what really do we have? And that's when you get into potentially top-holing, um, service lines or doing sampling to try to determine specifically that particular service line. That's all phase two, which would be post-October twenty twenty-four down the road. And there would be another source of funding that came along with that. Um, essentially EPA is gonna give Vermont another, besides the twenty million that they gave them this year, they have four more years of that same funding related to, uh, lead service replacement. So over the next four years, there will be another eighty to a hundred million dollars just specifically for lead service replacement, uh, identification and replacement. So this is the initial stage and what the state is really hoping to do is get a sense of what the issue is, like how big the issue is. Um, they, they really don't know if this is a concern, if they do have situations like what happened in Flint potentially out there, or is it, no, we, we, we don't have a lot of this and outside of some of the really older water systems, uh, in the state, um, this isn't as much of a concern. So this is really kind of a culmination of getting all the water records together and collecting whatever data you can to try to put as many things in the known category, uh, as far as the water service, uh, materials.
So is this your estimate for phase one, the eighty-six thousand basically?
Yep.
All right. EPA says you will do it and you'll pay for it.
That's a super immediate of everybody's basements. So that's six hundred some odd basements, if not more. Um, it also, uh, involves doing a records review, basically collecting all the records. Uh, the other component of it and one we talked to Sean specifically about was, uh, GPSing all the curb stops. So that the G, the curb stops could be added to the GIS database that's been developed and that Sean could use that for maintenance purposes, but also as a replacement for his tie cars. So he wouldn't need to go to a tie car to find a curb stop. He could have a little GPS unit that would put him on individual curb stops. So hopefully down the road that would save you guys some, some O and M cost with efficiencies.
I think we have to have Sean and have discussion about this.
I agree.
Yeah.
I've sat in on all the meetings too, so.
Yeah.
But Sean said he definitely can't handle it.
No.
He tried doing one on his own and it took him extensive amount of time.
I think it'd be good to sit down and talk with him. Well, thank you. That's very descriptive. We do appreciate it.
Yeah, not, not a problem and, and I agree, talking to Sean, making sure you guys understand what it means out with this and what it means for him is the way to go. And if you guys have any other questions, um, for us, don't hesitate to ask. There, there are other municipalities going through this right now too, and I encourage you guys, uh, to talk amongst yourselves related to the different towns, how people are approaching this and, and what they're considering and not considering.
Yes, one, segment three.
One, one more question. So let's just say you find a house and they have a lead line. Who's gonna be responsible for changing that?
That's a very good question. So as of right now, the way EPA is, is considering administering this, um, or have, have given indications is that will be the town's responsibility as a partner in getting that lead service line replaced. And the reason that they put it that way is EPA can't give federal dollars for private infrastructure improvement. They can give money to a municipality that is partnering with, uh, private replacements. So they're trying to thread a needle here with their money that normally wouldn't apply to this. Um, so in a lot of cases, what it ends up meaning is the contractor gets hired by the town, you give us a price to replace all the services on one side of the street, you give us a price to replace all the services on the other side of the street. And then the town goes back and forth trying to figure out getting easements from the owners and figuring out if some of that cost can be shared if the town is going to have to have any out-of-pocket costs. The state is hoping that there's gonna be enough money that the replacements won't have a lot of out-of, out-of-pocket costs because of this kind of, you know, private-public situation. But there, there's really no way to know right now. Um, we, we're in the process of doing some service line replacement in Dorset. Um, and it required an easement for every service that we're going to touch because it's private property. So we had to demonstrate that the town had some amount of control over that service, even if they didn't end up owning the service when they were done. So that's the kind of, that's the needle that everybody's gonna try to thread and that's why no one's really talking about that now because that'll be post-two thousand twenty-four and beyond. More than likely the town as the water, water system owner will be responsible for making sure that material is removed from their water system.
People are complaining about their water bills now. Imagine what they're gonna be when all this goes through.
Yeah.
You are not wrong.
Oh, boy. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, last one on your do. Sorry, Anne, did you say, did I interrupt you again?
I just told them that you have all your priority lists that they need to sign off on.
Yeah, and just with the priority list applications, um, so those are non-binding. You need to be on the priority list to be eligible for construction money in the upcoming fiscal year. Um, but they're non-binding, so there, there's no reason not to submit these. You'll notice there's ones for segment two and segment three. And we just got talked, got done talking about, well, neither one of these are going anytime soon, so why are we looking to try to get money out of this fiscal cycle? The reason we're recommending it with segment two and segment three specifically is, um, and, and this again is something that John Haverstock and I have talked about for a couple of years now, is with all of the potential free money that's out there, this is probably a very good time for the town to at least be, have the opportunity to get the best financial package that they could related to costs for segment two and segment three. And the idea would be is if we did get a package that the town was happy with or at least seemed like a good deal for them, we could then try to put some political pressure and earmark that money to say, we know we're not spending it in this fiscal cycle and the town has no control over that, it's V-Trans. But this is a good deal for the town. This is going to go towards sewer and water. We just can't tell you it's gonna go this year. And try to secure a funding package if it, if the town felt that it was a, a, a good funding package related to those costs. Cause those costs are not getting any smaller today than they, they were the day before. Um, so it's really just kind of leaving options open for those two projects to keep looking at every fiscal cycle and what's available for funding costs. Um, the other two are related to the Plains Road, um, projects that are being considered, both the sewer and the water. Um, and that's just to put you guys on a funding list so that if you do decide to move forward and do spend some ARPA money related to that, that this could be a backstop to deal with any overrun or to help supplement funding of those projects should you decide to proceed forward, uh, with either one of those projects.
Okay. What a real sunshine.
We appreciate it, but wow, it's a lot.
It, it certainly is. Um, and if anybody has any questions or thinks about something else, um, afterwards, please feel free to, to give it to Anne and she can forward it on to me. Happy to answer any questions. The submission deadline for that is the end of February. Um, and like I said, it's not binding, uh, but obviously we want board support, uh, to submit these on behalf of the town. So that's, that's really what we're looking for here.
So, and what about segment three? We didn't need to.
Should we be doing three?
So seg, segment three is related to the water. And again, it's the same reason for segment two, trying, and, and for segment three, that's related to what we project the construction cost to be. So again, it's trying to play the fiscal funding game and see if this year is the year where you guys are gonna get a good deal. For instance, segment two was on last year's prior, or the current priority list. And it was eligible for a grant of about thirty-five, uh, percent of the total project cost, which sounds okay. Um, but with the amount of money that's being tossed around, um, I, I certainly think that thirty-five percent is probably closer to the bottom of what you guys should expect and should be shooting for, you know, get over that fifty percent mark if not more, um, and, and, and see if that's possible. So that's why segment three was included in that as well, to just, you can't, you aren't eligible for the money unless you're on that list. And if you're on the list and decide to do nothing with it, no harm, no suffering.
Okay. Alrighty.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, have a good night.
Do we need to sign those?
Um, no, I'm the authorized person for these. So I just need to get a permission from you guys to sign them to get on the priority list.
Get on the list.
Yeah, I know.
It's not binding, so.
It's non-binding. There's four of them total because he has segment two, segment three, the water for Plains Road and the sewer for Plains Road to try to see if we can get a deal for Plains Road. Um, because we know it needs to be done. It's one of the top priorities that we have, other than what we can't control on Route seven. So he said it would be worth trying to put in for both of those to see if we could get funding towards the water and sewer for.
I make a motion, we have Anne sign those documents to get us on the list.
I'll second that.
Yep, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
So, okay, so I'm just throwing out a thought here and I don't know if we can do this or not, but I don't know how many houses there are on Plains Road, but there's a few. Can we require people to upgrade their line into their, when we're doing all this new water, can we require them to upgrade that so we know those are taken care of, to save people some money?
That's a great question to talk to Sean about. You know, I'll bring that up and that.
I mean, cause you're gonna have it all torn up anyway. There's no better time to change it.
Exactly, especially in the village, I mean.
And even, even if, you know.
If they did this one up here.
We had to work it into the whole thing just to get it done because this EPA thing is gonna bankrupt us.
Yeah, it is.
We'll probably have to get an Act two fifty permit for each connection, knowing the state, so.
So, I mean, I just think that's something.
We should, we need to talk to Sean, yeah, we gotta have a, we gotta block him off. There's a lot of stuff here.
Oh, I can add him to the agenda for the next meeting.
That sounds good.
Um.
Or the one right after the annual meeting or whatever.
Well, well, yeah, you're gonna sign it.
We're gonna sign these, there's not a.
We're signing.
No.
We're pressing, but we still need a. We gotta set some time aside for this one.
Yeah.
Hold on, let me, I just wanna make sure the deadline for this one. Don't wanna miss a deadline.
In the February. You just test people's water, if there's no lead in it, then probably the lines are all right, right?
I don't think so.
They just test the water, they're not pulling up.
Yeah, I, I don't know why you gotta check.
EPA, they think differently there.
Oh, yeah.
And it goes depending on who's in charge of it. It's really.
Different, but there's no think.
Well, no, it goes back and forth depending on who's in charge. They change rules every four years out of that organization, so.
Like I know my road, there's no lead because it's all PVC, the new line, plus it's all copper.
So what was discussed in the meeting between Sean, Craig Jewitt and myself when we were talking about, um, this lead thing was that we, the lead is more of a concern for houses built before, I think it's nineteen eighty-three or eighty-five, I can't remember which. So, um, those are the ones that we have to worry about the most. The ones built after that, lead was not an option for them legally. So there's less of a thing. So I had said I would be willing to help lower the cost and I've talked to Helen too and she's, uh, she's willing to help do research on when buildings were built and everything because the spreadsheet that you have to fill out for each house, you have to have, um, GPS coordinates for two different points on each house, the span numbers, the types. Um, Sean tried sitting down and filling out one house and it, I can't remember how many hours, but it was hours. And he's like, there's no way I would be able to sit down and do six hundred and twenty-one of these.
But even if yours is copper, if they use leaded solder, you got lead. That's the problem, even if it's copper, because the solder before eighty-four had lead in it. But you can still go get leaded solder.
Oh, yeah.
And use it if you want now.
Stainless windows, they still use it and such.
Yeah.
They get you in a trouble later.
Well, yeah, but, I mean, it does work better.
All right, let's go into the mowing bit. Brad, are you there?
So, um, Brad.
Did you get ahold of him when you called?
I did. Brad can't turn, Brett, Brad can't get unmuted. He's only on to listen because he saw that there was something on mowing on here.
All right.
Okay? That was, that was the official text.
Thank you.
So I guess, why is the mowing bid in here if we haven't put it out to bid?
We did, so you guys had asked about a breakdown about what it should be costing us. Um, when I asked about it, this is what was handed to me and this is what a previous bid had been before the bid that we're currently working under.
Yeah, whether we, or whether we buy our own mower, you know.
And we're trying to figure out if we'd rather do this in-house rather than put it out to bid again, or if we'd like to put it out to bid again. And we're trying to figure out if we'd rather do this in-house, rather than put it out to bid again, or if we'd like to put it out to bid again.
First you put it out to bid, then we see, I would think, and look at it. We don't know what we're talking.
You figure the man-hours, the purchase of the mower, the wear and tear on the mower, the maintenance on the mower.
So this was twenty to twenty-one. Was this last one the same thing?
The last one was, I asked for it, I did not receive it yet. Um, I need to dig a little deeper.
Oh, okay.
Um.
We got somewhere, bro.
So what was the total on that one, Mark?
Thirty-nine. Thirty-nine fifty-eight.
Yeah, we were.
It was less than that, cause like thirty.
It was a little bit less.
It was, it was like a couple hundred bucks difference. It wasn't much.
Right, no, it was just, just a hair less, yes.
This is a great example.
So, four thousand dollars, I mean, mower's gonna cost you a lot more than that.
Oh, yeah, plus your man-hours.
Plus your man-hours and butt, um.
But we also need to add.
Bid it for now until after.
We also have to add locations to this as well, as we discussed.
Yep. I know, so why don't we put it out to bid with added.
With the added, two added, the locations on either end of town.
When would you like to put it out to bid? I know it doesn't normally go out until April or May, but I know a lot of contractors like to start walking and.
Yeah, I put it out.
Put it out to bid?
I mean, you can always give a little extra time for people to bid to make sure we get more than one or two bids.
Do you want me to reach out to those that have previously bid and mail them the invitation to bid?
Yes, yes.
Are they gonna, where are we gonna add, like, the sign coming into town?
And the sign on either end, those were we gonna add.
Usually we have two or three or four bids.
Usually at least two, sometimes three.
Usually like to have at least three.
That would be nice.
Yeah.
Alright, town road postings, sign off.
Um, hold on, I lost my agenda. Okay, so there's been a snafu with that, so we don't need to talk about that tonight. That can be tabled.
Okay. Perfect.
Compare that one.
Alright, uh, right-of-way permit for, uh, DG Outback Acres Solar.
Yep.
And that's the, the road that's, it's already been.
It's already been put in pretty much. And Chad okayed it. I just need your signatures on it.
You want them all there?
You can put them all right by Alicia's, yeah, where that blank's line is.
Put them on the right side. We've done that before, signed the wrong side.
No, this one, this one is an older permit one, so it just shows that Alicia has to sign it, but you guys can all sign it on the lines above Alicia's name.
Alright, CAI contract.
So this is something that, um, comes up for renewal, I believe, every two years. It's a two-year contract. It's for the tax mapping for GIS. Um, I gave this to Lisa Wright, um, because it's seven thousand six hundred dollars for the map and GIS maintenance service. And, uh, and it includes three complete sets that are twenty-four by twenty-four, and one complete set that's eighteen by eighteen for tax, tax map prints. She was gonna go back to them because she doesn't believe we need all of those books.
No.
She's like, we could use one, I, I can't remember which size, she could said she could use one of. Helen does need one of the twenty-four by twenty-fours, but we're not exactly sure why we have four sets when zoning and assessors can. So this might be adjusted, um, but I wanted to give you a heads up. Lisa didn't tell me she was gonna try to negotiate
Yeah.
until after I already started the agenda.
Okay.
So this is something that can be tabled, and by next time, I'll have a better idea of what's going on with it.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I don't see why we need more than one set.
Okay.
I mean, Helen can walk across the hall.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the FEMA, um, that's, you need just, you need, okay, you signing that, is that?
So, yes, so, I had got your permission, I think at the last meeting, to work on a possible grant opportunity for a firefighter's grant that needs to go through FEMA Go. We do not have an authorized representative currently that can do a FEMA Go grant. So I was asking for permission to become the authorized person to be able to put in this grant.
Yep.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I'll only work on thank you.
Well, she gets, keeps her out of trouble.
The door is a hot mess, we need to, well, put that out to.
Door is a hot mess. Um, I'd like to be able to contact Royal Glass first, because it is a security door. Um, and there's some concerns about whether an alarm is even hooked up to the door at the moment. But for those that don't know what we're talking about, you can literally.
There's not an alarm on that door. The alarms are in the hall.
Everybody knows they're.
Yeah, they're motion.
Um, I can literally shake the door in the jam if I put my hands on either side of it, so it's become a security issue. And you can see the sidewalk through the jam, uh, through the sweep at the bottom, so.
Sweep, you can see snowflakes coming.
Take a look at it.
So I just needed permission for you guys to.
Yes, please do. Alright, and then I wrote abbreviated notes with the loan, that's all I wrote down for this one.
So, the loan, bear with me for a second, right here. Um, this is a closeout repayment schedule for work we've already done. This was for, uh, the Depot Hill Pump Station or something you did before my time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, year one starts April thirtieth for a repayment, and they just want us to sign off that we have seen the repayment schedule. Uh, and actually, Alicia's the only one, I believe, cause she's an authorized representative that can sign this. So, that's what I need for that one.
Um, and then the rec fees.
So, rec fees for, um, the summer camp that Jen Pop does through the Recreation Department, she would like to go up five dollars a week for the camp fees to make it ninety dollars a week per, uh, child, student, however you wanna call them. Um, and she just needed approval for that to go up.
She had mentioned that when she brought her budget to us.
Yep. She didn't know what the process was, if it had to be approved by you or not, so she just wanted it.
Go ahead. Just do it.
Yep, do it.
Wasn't there, there was something else she'd asked me about, um, oh, sliding fee, sliding scale.
In the past, she's done sliding school, sliding scale for those that have financial need, and she wanted to make sure that was okay too. She had talked to me about that, but it's something that she's always done. She's always done a sliding scale. So I don't think that needs to be adjusted. It's just the outright fee that needed to be adjusted.
Lot of money on there.
Lot of money, I enjoy it. Oh, yeah.
Alright, um. Alright, let's bang an old business. So Town Report is coming together nicely.
I'm working on it. I am, I don't know, forty-seven pages into it. Um, on, on the table tonight, you guys had an idea for the Selectment's Report. Uh, we can talk about it after meeting if you have any changes to it. I didn't know what to type, so I just went to Town.
Yeah, I know.
And if you want to see a copy of the Town Report, let me know. I have until Friday afternoon to submit it to Repro, so I'm working as fast and furiously on it as I can to get it done.
And then I probably should have maybe mentioned this during Select Board member remarks, but, um, so Town Report Dedication will be February fifteenth at nine AM, if anyone can come.
Get it a week later, I could be here, but.
Mike on the leash, or?
No, he's in classes.
Vacation week.
Oh. Alright, um, transfer station ordinance.
We had discussed it last time. I made the one change, um, to have it thirty-three gallon trash bag.
Yeah.
I didn't know if there was any other adjustments, but.
And that is in the Town Report, Anne, on the website, the thirty to thirty-three gallons. It's already in there.
Yep.
It wasn't.
Would it need to be in the ordinance?
It wasn't.
Okay, so, so, given your, our discussion from early on, we need to change the way we're doing that with the card, with the punch card. I guess I don't understand what the problem with the punch card is, if they have the permit to come here, how does that affect Gleason Road?
Yeah.
So Gleason Road, in order to get, um, the cheaper fees, if we ha, if they have a pass from Pittsford, they would get the reduced rate, because Pittsford is a reciprocating town normally.
Right.
But because we include the punch card, they can't do that. And I don't, I don't understand.
What's the relationship? That doesn't make.
Doesn't make any sense.
He said that's the way they're, they're.
How the hell they know we got punch card?
Cause they watch the.
We are all in the same district.
Well, I know.
I know, but the punch card doesn't have anything to do with.
On the windshield.
Yeah, we have the sticker on the windshield. I don't understand what the punch card has to do with anything.
Are there a lot of people from Pittsford trying to use, uh, the Rutland?
I have no, I have no data on that.
I was wondering if it was an issue to address.
Where's Gleason Road?
Right behind the high school.
Right behind the high school.
Football field is.
Just beyond football field.
And it's, it's actually behind the football field.
The dump is right behind the school.
Okay, so that's a long ways for people from Pittsford to be taking their garbage.
Yeah, it's easy to just go up and down the side of the road and throw it out.
Well, you do it well, that's what Syndicate rode for, yeah.
I actually do bring my trash to Rutland, because they're open six days a week, you know, and it's more convenient. You pay a little bit extra per ton, who cares, personally.
Well, yeah, just to me, that.
I was just passing on the information.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't see.
For big stuff, you're gonna pay X. Well, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so.
More big deal, I guess.
Yeah. Yeah, leave it the way it is.
Okay, so are, do we, are we gonna approve this ordinance then?
Make a motion, we approve the ordinance.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You opposed? I didn't know if I heard all the ayes.
Well, said aye.
Alright, speed limit ordinance.
Yep.
So Chad did do the road that you asked to have.
Drive-by on Hollister.
He added some of them.
Um, and he, he said twenty-five miles an hour would probably be a better one.
Yeah.
So that change has been made in this copy.
Great.
And I don't know if you had any other changes after reading it again, or not.
Um, this is the speed ordinance, right?
Yep.
So, I have a question on this one. Number eleven, new street and private right-of-ways. The private right-of-way, how are we controlling the speed on that?
So, I took this.
That is not our responsibility. No, we don't. It shouldn't be in there.
Okay.
Private roads, we don't control speed.
So that, that's the only thing I found that didn't seem right. I don't know why we have any control over someone's private right-of-way.
We don't.
We don't, so, I would like to remove that if we're gonna.
Okay, yeah, I didn't catch that one.
Yeah, I know, that's.
Alright.
Yep. I read it, Dave.
Well, I read it, but I, I just, I didn't catch that, but.
Usually it's a whole.
Thirty-five miles an hour on Hollister Road, and, and only twenty-five on Syndicate. I mean, I could see it the other way around, but it didn't make much sense.
If we can eliminate that, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, okay, I'll change it and have it ready for you to sign next week.
Till one of us sees something else.
Message me in the meantime. Um, so ATV piggybacks, so we have to hold off on ATV until.
Yeah, I got one on that one, too.
Okay.
Uh, time of operation. Um, ATVs are used commonly on farms, all the time.
Yeah.
And I run mine between ten and six at night, so I, I'm not sure about that. I don't know if we should, that belongs in there, because.
So what does it say?
It says, "Time of operation, ATVs may not be operated within the town between ten PM and six AM, Monday through Sunday."
Hmm.
I'll break this ordinance if it's in, so I don't want to, I don't wanna break it.
What do you say, town? What do you mean?
Yeah, what's, the, that encompasses the whole town, or just the village?
And we could change it to village.
The village is fine, but the whole town?
Yeah, right.
We could change it to say village instead.
I could see the village.
Yeah, village, village is fine.
Yep.
I'll make that adjustment, too. Any other adjustments?
No, that was all I had.
I would, I, I, at some point when that's finalized, I'd like to see that ordinance.
You've seen it before, but I'll give it to you again.
I've seen it before?
I'll go pay another one for you.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty much the old one.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't give any, they haven't.
Cross the road at a ninety-degree angle.
Okay.
They haven't all put up.
That's why I would, because I know there was a lot of talk from like Benson and stuff. Okay, that's.
Yeah, and that never went anywhere, so.
No.
No, this is just that they can only cross our roads at a ninety-degree angle.
Okay. We're good with that, yeah.
Okay. Uh, truck signs for height limits.
So I have talked to Proctor's town manager, I've talked to, uh, Center Rutland, Rutland Town, whatever that one is over there in the Center Rutland, whatever we call it.
Rutland Town.
Yeah. I've talked to their town administrator and their, um, road commissioner, and they all said that as long as we supplied the signs, they were okay with us putting them up.
Okay.
So we should be good to go on that. Um, the road commissioner and the, yeah, the road commissioner mainly, and the town administrator, we both had conversations, and he said that he would rather see us put it back a little bit further off from four, so where it has the old four, put it there, so that they'd be able to loop around there if they tried to come down. Is, and he said, because if we put it right on four, V-Trans will likely take it down, whereas if we put it off four just enough, like where the old four is that goes out by, I think it's Big Joe's, and out towards the, um, scrap place, they could loop around that way to get back onto four A. But.
Yeah, okay, yeah. West Proctor Road, that's what they're talking about.
But both of them are okay with us putting up signs.
Good, good.
And Chad.
Where are we gonna put it in Proctor?
Proctor, we are going to put it, um, right by another one of the signs, um, right by White's Crossing on the Proctor side. We already have a sign there about, um, like overweight.
Right, but where are they gonna turn around if they go that far?
Well, that was my concern, so it's another conversation with Michael after talking with Chad, too. Do we also put one at the five-way intersection?
Yeah.
I would think so.
So.
Cause they can.
Yeah, they can turn around there.
They can prob, maybe turn around there.
It's not a tow truck that turn around.
Well, but still.
Behoove them to, it would behoove both towns to have one there anyways, because once they turn down there, they're either gonna try to go out Florence Road, or they're gonna.
Or go down to the low trestle.
Yeah.
The trestle, or they're gonna go and try to go over Gorham Bridge, cause it's all.
So, yeah, they're all.
All right there. And the last time a tractor trailer truck got there, they ended up going around the loop by Proctor Youth Fields, around on the dirt, and then back up and around, because they couldn't figure out how to turn around otherwise.
Wow, yeah. That's the problem, you gotta, gotta stop them where they got a place to turn around, cause White's Crossing is too far.
Yeah, and I've talked to Michael several times about it, and he was on board with whatever signage we needed. He'd like to keep them on Route three or on four A to seven.
Right.
So he's like, whatever we need to do that, I'm
Yeah.
happy to help.
Good.
Okay, good.
So.
Um, so Chad's not here for extended warranty for new trucks.
We still haven't heard it's, heard from back from the dealership, so that can be.
Okay.
Uh, junk ordinance violations.
So the letters went out. You guys have copies in your, um, packets. Uh, health officer has gone out as well. He had gone out, he'd actually already made plans to go out.
Right.
Um, and he witnessed three truckloads being taken out of the worst one last Saturday. They took three truckloads out of there of stuff.
Good.
Um, but he was gonna go back because of the concern I had after looking at the pictures, and I think most of you did, with the door that had no deck under it and.
Window that was, nothing under the window.
And the fill pipe for the oil being right there.
Yep.
So, he hadn't seen that, because I guess it's like around on the backside
Yeah.
of the house or whatever, but he was gonna go make another inspection and check on everything, and warn them from the health officer viewpoint on that as well, since it's a tenant.
And that is a rental property.
A rental property.
If that's rental, we can get the state involved.
And that's what he was gonna do next.
It's crazy, they're getting money for that.
Oh, yeah.
He was gonna, um, there's a certain department within the state, and he was gonna make that phone call.
Okay.
Yep.
Good. Alright, Fire Hill Dog Issue. Always a.
Yep, I hear from Ray a couple times a week. They are fed up, so, I mean, he's had over two months at this point to move the dogs. I've talked to him, you know, um, I even offered to help him get his kennel moved and whatever, and
Nothing.
Nothing, so.
Isn't that something we need to discuss in executive session?
Um, maybe.
I don't know, I mean, it's.
Didn't we have a?
We do have, well, we had, we had legal advice before. I see you guys asked again last week, or last weekend, wasn't it, here? But we have already gotten it from VLCT, and it's not new, and from Gary, so it's the same, you know.
Well, I understand it's why Gary wants us to wait till the new one goes into effect.
Well, that's why, that was my question.
Because the new ordinance could stand up, it has teeth.
It has legal.
Has legal teeth to it.
The old one's not gonna have a legal standing, and another thirteen.
Oh, okay, alright, well, that, that was the explanation I needed to hear. So when does the new one go into effect?
So you guys signed it December twenty-first. They have sixty days. So, you guys signed it December twenty-first. They have sixty days from there, because there's a forty-four day appeal, and nobody's appealed it yet, so we're almost out of that. So, I believe sixty days will be, um.
January to February twenty.
February twenty, uh, twentieth, I believe.
We still got.
Three weeks.
Yep, yep. And then from there, it's going to become, we have to do the three fines.
And we just have to follow.
No, we, no, we understand that. I understand that.
Follow it to the T, he said.
Yeah.
At that point.
And not get involved outside of that, you know. That was definitely made clear.
Well, I guess we can explain to them that this is what's in place.
This is what's gonna happen, yeah. Explain that to them.